All right, I think we've got everybody. Hi Terry.
Hi.
All right, we are recording, we're live on YouTube, so everybody good? Yeah, all right, let's go for it. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 5:02 PM. This is the February regular meeting of the Altadena Library District Board of Trustees, and we will begin as always with our roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capal.
Here.
Trustee Cervantes.
Rose.
And Trustee Wilkerson. All right, good to see everybody. Before we dive in, oh, I got you. Perfect, thank you. Before we dive in, do we have anything that anybody would like to move around on the agenda? Any changes or rearrangements? Okay, if there is nothing, then I'd like a motion please to go ahead and adopt the agenda as it appears in your packet.
I'll move.
Oh, I heard both of you at the same time. I heard, I saw Terry's hand, so we'll go with Terry for the motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay, thanks guys. Make sure, so just a reminder, as we jump in at the beginning here, if you're gonna make a motion or do anything else, we've gotta hear you as well as see you. And a reminder as well, please, to not put anything in the chat because nobody who is watching on YouTube can see it. So if there's anything you wanna say, just unmute yourself and dive right in. So we've got a motion and a second. As always, we'll do everything by roll call vote. So to approve the agenda, Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capal.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Yes, hi.
All right, and it's an I vote for me as well. All right, as far as I know, we have no public comment on non-agenda items. As always, if public comments come in later or at other points during the meeting, we will of course be delighted to hear from anybody at that time. But without any, at this point, we'll go on to the consent calendar. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. That's everything beginning on page three up to page 18 in your board package. If I can get a motion in a second, then we can pause and discuss anything that anybody would like to touch on. So do we hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Anything that anybody would like to chat about or talk about or pull out from anything in the consent calendar floor is open?
I can go ahead and start unless somebody else wants to jump in.
Go ahead, Jason.
Um, as usual, a lot of amazing stuff happening with our great staff here in Altadena. So I'll try and just touch on a couple of things, since we do have a packed agenda. So first, from the Assistant Directors' report, adding these amazing hiking backpacks to the library of things with, not just backpacks, but all this fun stuff to do while you're on your hike enjoying Altadena is great. And I wanna just throw out there for the staff, because it looked like from the report that there's some plans in the future to maybe using our amazing new mobile library to set up at some of the trailheads. I would love, if we do get to that point, to connect the staff with the Mount Wilson Bicycle Association, who hands out, has free bells for bicycles. So if we ever get that happening, it'd be great to have that connection and be able to hand out free bells to folks as well. So just throwing that out there. And then, the other thing I wanna just say, and I saw this in virtually every report, is really, you know, the commitment that we're seeing from all of the staff around, you know, being really intentional with diversity and inclusion in all of the work that's being done. You know, really thoughtful about meeting people where they're at and getting away from this idea that people who want services will come to the library and ask for them and say, "Hey, I've got opinions, listen to them." And so again, in every report, that effort is really clear, really apparent, and I wanna just applaud all of the staff for continuing to push in that direction. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other observations or discussion items that anybody would like to highlight? Well, I'd like to point out how exciting it is to see the revitalization and the next, I guess, generation of our Community Conversations Initiative. Certainly a really big part of some of the process that brought all of us to the table at various points in time, and I'm really excited to see it in its new phase. And as the staff appoint pointed out, this is an ongoing process that we're always engaging in, we're always reimagining, and so I think that that's really exciting. I will also point out that at the end of Chloe's report, she reminded all of us that they are looking for hosts for community conversations, and I would like to volunteer all of us as hosts. I'd love to see the trustees actively involved. So certainly, I would be happy to do anything I can to help. I know all of it's gonna be virtual for the moment, but this is gonna be an ongoing initiative. So please, please loop us in, wrap us in. I think that, you know, in whatever way we can be helpful, this is a really, this is a really important part of our ongoing public outreach, and I'm excited to see it in its next phase. All right, any other comments or discussion items on the consent calendar? If not, we've got a motion in a second, so I'll go ahead and call the question on this. So to approve the consent calendar, Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capal.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
And an I from me. All right, perfect, thanks everybody. So we move into our reports now. So first, we have our support group reports. So from the Altadena Library Foundation, I see Bridget's on the line. So Bridget, welcome. Hi.
Hey. How you doing?
Good.
I think the phrase that is really resonating with the foundation right now is, "We've got this." That's just sort of becoming our mantra now. So with a newly minted mission statement to guide us, we create a challenging but achievable set of goals to move us forward in 2021. We segmented our four primary goals into two areas of focus. What we intend to accomplish for the library and what we intend to accomplish for the foundation. So for the library, our primary, our two goals are, number one, to raise $30,000 to fund the mobile library, art restoration, preservation, and literacy programming, as well as the little library projects. Our second goal then is to actively engage with the community through the community conversations, as well as various events, donor, donor events, as well as just reaching out to other civic organizations. And then, for the foundation, our two goals are to focus on our fiscal health, and then to also work on creating sustainable practices, so that we're not always having to rely upon the library staff to do things for us. I once said that I wanted to wake up on November 4th knowing that our library would be on solid ground. With that hope fulfilled, I now wake up every day with renewed energy for the many ways the foundation will bring people, ideas, and resources together through fundraising and advocacy in support of our libraries. Your Altadena Library Foundation Board has got your back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bridget. It's really exciting to hear all of this planning and strategy coming together. It's an exciting time.
It is.
Any questions for Bridget before we let her go?
I just wanna comment, as the liaison, I was duly impressed with the level of knowledge and desire to roll up their sleeves and to assist the library and really kind of embrace this, this planning process. And really, I think, came up with some wonderful ideas that were just laid out. And just, I think that, you know, to have friends like that looking to support the library and everything we're trying to do, it just, it really, you know, defines what community is all about, and, you know, Bridget and her leadership really was, you know, front and center as they were able to come up with this new strategy, strategies, excuse me, and, you know, support the library. And specifically, which is really nice, you know, it's not only supporting some specific, you know, objectives that our director had laid out, but they're in sync with the library's goals and objectives. So everything just seems to be humming quite nicely. So I thank you, Bridget, and her, and her group for that assistance.
Thank you, thank you.
Here, here, thanks so much, Bridget.
Sure.
All right, looks like we don't have anybody from the Friends right now. So Camila, I'm gonna come to you a little bit later in your liaison report, and we can, we can chat about that then. And so I'd like to move on to our Director's Report. Nikki.
All right, good evening trustees, good to see all of you. I wanted to start out again congratulating Cindy Teolia on her acceptance into the Master's Program of American Indian Studies at UCLA. She promises to be a regular patron after her last day this coming Friday, and we're already coming up with programming and enlisting her into our Library of Experts and any other way that we can tap into the things that she's gonna learn and skills she's building. I also have the very sad news to share that our wonderful administrative assistant, Natalia Romo, has accepted a position with the LA County Board of Supervisors, and her last day with us will be next Wednesday, March the 3rd. She will be working in Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. We are so sad to see her go already, but so thankful to her for her vast contributions in the only eight months that she was with us. We will also find ways to collaborate with her in the future as well. And now I have an inside track to LA County, by the way. So, since the recruitment was less than a year ago, we have already been able to make a conditional offer to another candidate, and hope they'll be able to join us very soon. So shout out to Natalia, but she's gonna be greatly missed. And we wanted to give the trustees an opportunity to say something to her, since tonight will be her last meeting with us. So another big shout out to the staff and managers, as we have continued to work so productively, as you pointed out from the reports from home. I do have to say, though, we are so excited to be returning to the buildings next week, this coming Monday, March the 1st. We've already opened the book drops at both branches, so if anybody wants to return materials, they're able to do so. And we'll be opening up the catalog for people to be able to search it and place holds, starting this coming Wednesday, February the 24th. Curbside is gonna open next Tuesday, March 2nd. So if people are placing holds, they'll get notified and can set up appointments starting on Tuesday. The staff actually called all of the holds from before that have been sitting on the shelves since the beginning of December to start setting up appointments for them as well. We've been getting inundated with calls this week, with people knowing that we're gonna be opening back up. In addition to that, Passport Services will also be opening on this coming Monday, March the 1st. They, their phone has been ringing off the hook practically the entire time that we've been working from home. So the staff, Tony and Natalie, shout out to them, they do such a fabulous job in the passport office. They have people driving from hours away, just because they're bilingual, they're super knowledgeable, and they always get lots of kudos from the State Department, just so you guys are aware. They're already busy scheduling appointments for next week. As I mentioned in my report, full-time staff will be staggered to work one week in the building and then a week at home, to limit the number of staff at any given time in both of the buildings. I do wanna give a big shout out to Nicole Fabry and Victor Werberg for their help creating our COVID prevention plan in prevention, or in preparation for bringing staff back to work in as safe a manner as we possibly can. I attended, I think I put in the report, a webinar that strongly encouraged all agencies to have, the CPP is what they called it. So we took what were formerly our Return to Work Guidelines and like beefed them up. So it's a six-page document, very clearly spelling out all of the guidelines that staff need to be adhering to. And we also required that staff watched LA County Public Health, very in-depth webinar, our workshop on how to properly wash your hands, and all of the other safety protocols that are into effect. So I would also like to thank our EDI team for all of the work that they did last year to develop curriculum around the EDI concepts. We continue to focus on this, especially with our professional development this year. And as Jason mentioned, we've already seen the application of these concepts to the programs, services, and collections that we offer. So kudos to the staff. This really was a ground, you know, grassroots effort by the staff to emphasize this as a training need. And again, I'm like very proud of the work that the staff has done, especially the team that put together all that curriculum last year. Again, statistics continue to change from month to month, and I'm a numbers person, so honestly, it's driving me nuts. I don't know when we're gonna be able to go, like, comparing year to year on statistics, but in January, as you did see, we saw a rise in e-resource checkouts, as patrons were not able to check out items through curbside. So now that we'll be coming back in in March, again, statistics are gonna shift. But it really has given the chance, the staff a chance to focus on building our e-resources in a really robust manner, as well as, you know, now there's gonna shift back to physical collection building, so that we have all the newest, latest, and greatest when we open back up to the public and offer through curbside. Just real quickly, with the Little Free Libraries, Helen and Chloe identified 20 to 30 of them throughout the community, and went and gave them a copy of the Wild LA book that we used for Rena Dina last year, as well as the zine that was created by our staff member Alice on the books that had impact on us in 2020 as staff. And they gave the zine to all of the Free Little, Little Free Library owners as well. Several of them got, have gotten back in touch with us, and we're really excited to build these relationships across the community, as well as we're in conversation with LA County Parks to add some of the Little Free Libraries at the local parks as well. So kudos to Chloe and Helen for their work on that. And then I also am so excited that we now have officially purchased our van to move forward with our Mobile Library Services Initiative. Shout out to the foundation for their financial support to make that happen. Chloe, Christopher, and Jonathan are now working on the modifications needed to add materials, technology, Wi-Fi, and more. Everyone has just been so energized by getting the van and like integrating this new service into what we do. So the plan is for that to be ready to go late spring, in coordination with like promoting summer reading program and getting out into the community. Other than that, I pretty much feel like I spend most of my time working on the Board of Trustees committees in all our meetings and all the other things we have going on, between agenda prep, developing the packages, writing the RFPs. All of that has kept me extremely busy. So thank you to Victor and the other managers for covering everything else in the meantime. And also to Natalia, she's been like pivotal in making sure that we're meeting all of these deadlines. So again, going to be very sorely missed. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions for the Director?
Just a couple of comments from me, Nikki. One is, I'd like to give a shout out to Natalia as well, and wish her the best of luck going forward. She's really been a, you know, knowledgeable and helpful person to have there, a go-to, especially since we haven't figured out all of the intricacies of county bureaucracy. So she is a very welcome presence. And also, I'm a recipient of the Wild LA book, because I have a free little library in front of the house. So I was waiting till this meeting to express my thanks and my surprise, actually, that there was this great little book waiting for me at my doorstep. And it does give one the feeling, one who owns one of these libraries, that they've connected a little bit with the library. So keep that up. And as I mentioned, if there's any other promotional material that the library wants to put online, you know, like a little plastic thing with even when libraries open, or whatever you wanna do, let me know. I'll drill the holes and put the thing on for you, because it is a source of many, many stocks in the neighborhood, more than I ever thought there would be. So it's a great little neighborhood way to advertise that these libraries open for business again.
Yeah, and I do think that's the plan, is to try to like continue to coordinate with those owners to provide, you know, information about programming or other things that are going on at the library as well. And also filling it with some of the Friends materials with book plates. So again, like promoting the Friends, getting more membership and spreading the word. So thanks for having me, Terry.
You're welcome.
Please, Rush, go ahead.
Yes, I wanna chime in as well as Terry, and just congratulating Natalia. I mean, I didn't know her very long, but I was impressed with her professionalism. And she certainly represented you, Nikki, and the rest of the library extremely professionally. So I wish her the very best. And it's nice to have somebody over at the County Board of Supervisors that you can utilize that relationship in the future. So Natalia, we hope that we'll remain in touch with you. Nikki, now that, you know, great job getting the vehicle, I was kinda curious as far as, you know, how soon do you think we can get out on the road? And then secondly, what's the strategy for communicating to the residents of Altadena that we're open for business with the van?
I think right now, Chloe, our marketing and community engagement manager, is putting together, like, what programming and scheduling around all of that's gonna look like. She's the word matrix with me today of laying all of that out. There's discussion now around what staff are gonna be more so devoted to, like, getting out and doing the outreach in the community. I know we're gonna work closely with Diana, our Bob Lucas manager, to, you know, connect with different organizations or groups, potentially attending certain events, you know, be it like farmer's market, or we'll have to see where things are once we get to late May. But the plan is to have it ready to go, like mid to late May, and get it out. So we're developing a strategy right now around what that's gonna look like in terms of staff time. And actually, we're in conversation right now about creation of a librarian position that would relate more to innovations, which could like work closely with the Bookmobile or the Mobile Library Unit, work closely with Diana, and being more of a presence on the West Side. So all of that's being discussed right now.
Great, thank you for that. And I thought Jason had a really good idea. If there's nothing going on in particular weekend, we could go up to just park in one of the popular trails in the weekend and just, you know, let people know that we're there. It's, you get a lot of people walking by, it'd be a great opportunity. But thank you for that.
Yep, Christopher let me know this morning when we met, that he's working on the signal already of like it being a mobile hotspot. You know, you can go park it and people could use it for Wi-Fi.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I'll just add my congratulations to Cindy, certainly, and my very heartfelt thanks to Natalia. I'm not surprised that we're losing you, because you're super talented and you just know the job inside and out. And I'm really excited that we'll have the benefit of you at the county level, because I really, I know that we have all benefited tremendously from your, your knowledge, your expertise, and your, your assistance here. So I'm very sorry to see you go, but I know that it's, it's to the benefit of all of LA County. So you will be missed, certainly. All right, thank you so much, Nikki. If there's nothing else, then we will go on to our financial reports. Nicole. Nicole, do we have you? I think you're muted still.
Hmm, I don't know what's going on, Katie, I can check in.
Okay, all right, we can come back. Yeah, we'll come back, no problem. All right, so we've got a ton of committee reports. And some of our committee reports tonight are also tied to action items that show up later in the agenda. So here's what I'd like to do. For all of our committee reports, you know, we'll, we'll come to you and we'll do our regular report, but if there's anything that you would like to say about the, about the recommended actions that show up later in the agenda, I think this is a good time to do that as well. So it gives us an opportunity for trustees to ask any questions they might have, or, you know, any discussion that we need to have around any of those items. So we'll come first to you, Rush, for the Budget Committee.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. Commissioner, excuse me, Trustee Wilkerson and I had a nice conversation with Nikki and Nicole, as well as we also had Cindy Byerum, she's the CPA that represents the library, and really kind of helped Trustee Wilkerson and I kind of understand some of the budgets, the nuances of what's in the budget. So I wanna thank them for their patience as we kind of dug into really understanding what's behind the budget line items. And on that note, I will share with the other trustees is that we're going to be working at Katie's recommendation to come back with a more simplified explanation of the budget, what the different revenue sources, where, where they're tracked within, say, the county of LA, and through the banks, and then obviously the expenditures. But try to make it a more simplistic means by which, not only for trustees, but future trustees, but then most importantly, the citizens of Altadena, so they can look at the, at the website and kind of get at a glance where we are, the, the revenue and expenditures, and from a layman's perspective, understanding where they, where they come from. So I think it'd be very helpful. And I also just wanna say, I'm not sure we're doing my report now, but certainly it's gonna be covered by Nikki's report about the, the mid-year adjustments. I can go over that now if you'd like, Katie, or we can discuss that at a later point in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we've got an action item on approving the mid-year budget adjustment, but if you wanna talk briefly about the process that you guys went through, that would be helpful.
Oh, certainly, absolutely. So again, this was, you know, that we're in February now, and this is kind of a snapshot as where we are right now in the fiscal year, which runs from July to June. And they make the appropriate recommended adjustments to the line items to ensure that we're balanced at the end of the fiscal year. And this takes in consideration, obviously, the impact of COVID as it relates to not only revenue coming in that's gone down, but also the, the services that are being reduced. And indirectly, we're actually able to save money. On top of that, you've got the live, the donation for the van, as well as contribution increases from the foundation and the Friends. So the net bottom line is as though his, you know, services have gone down, and staff hadn't had to be paid overtime as much or travel time. So in the end, we actually have an opportunity to have a balanced budget, as well as adding an additional 168,000, I think it is back to 168,600, back to the library reserve fund. So we had a robust discussion about some of the nuances of those shifts, and, you know, well, Trustee Wilkerson and I both had, you know, a number of questions, and we feel very comfortable with what's being proposed, and we're going to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the mid-year adjustment. And bottom line is, it's a balanced budget.
Terrific, thank you. Any questions for the Budget Committee? Of course, we will have an opportunity to discuss the specifics of the mid-year budget adjustment when we get to that agenda item, but if there are any questions about process or... Okay, good, thank you very much, that's terrific. All right, yes ma'am.
Nicole's available now if you want her to do the financial.
Oh yeah, let's do it.
Hi, so sorry about that, everybody. Nobody ever comes to my door, and of course, tonight it did. Okay, so let's see, I'm on page 22 of the board package. These are financial statements for December 2020. So these are the numbers that you'll see reflected in the mid-year budget report. The mid-year report does show the February title, that's just when I happened to run the report, it was around February 4th, I think. But most of the figures in that mid-year budget are these figures here from December. And so that puts us at 50% of our budget year. And, and let's see, for the first time in the fiscal year, we're showing that net income. We did receive that major property tax installment in December. So that puts our total cash with the county at around 3.4 million, well above the requirement needed to satisfy the operating reserves. Total assets are almost at 7.5 with that big bump there. And then any, as indicated here, any accounts significantly over-under spent have been updated as part of the mid-year budget, and we'll review that shortly. And revenue highlights, we did receive a very gracious donation from the foundation in the amount of $32,000 for the, the mobile van purchase, for some art restoration, and also for some literacy materials. We received some scholarship funding from SDLA for Nikki's attendance at a special district leadership academy. Passport Services, again, was able to earn a significant amount for the few weeks that they were open, that's credit card income there. And then, again, the property tax installment, which I already mentioned. Exponenture highlights, we did pay a significant amount to Nick Partners to continue that work on the internet upgrades in the building. And then plumbing updates for repairs and replacing a very, very old water heater, the staff. The staff have actually complained that now the water is too hot, that the water heater has been fixed. And we also paid $34,000 to the county for our tax collection fees. And then we did have to purchase a new MacBook Pro for the marketing and community engagement manager. Of course, a critical purchase for her. And then, as mentioned, about that $32,000 donation allocated in the following departments for the art and the literacy. The Simmons painting is is really beautiful. It's unrecognizable. It looks like a brand new painting. And we should have a report ready for you guys for next month's meeting. There's some video footage of the artist going over her process and then some updated pictures of the painting that I'm excited for you guys to see. Any questions about the financial reports?
Well, you answered my question, Nicole, which was about the painting. Because I was I was wondering when we were going to see the finished product. But I'm excited for I'm excited for that next month. No questions from me. I know we're going to get into some of the line item specifics in our budget adjustment item. But any questions for Nicole, Terry?
I just had a curiosity question, I guess, as I noticed that, and I may have asked this before, but we paid $34,000 to LA County for tax collection fees, which is roughly about a 1% of what they what the yield was when you look at the property taxes that came in. So I was wondering, Nicole, if is that like how is that how they set their fees? Is by a percentage of of collections? You know what I mean? Or is there some other way that they do that? Do you know?
No, it is a percentage. And I believe you're right. It is just about 1%, a little bit over 1%.
Okay, and it's just a standard fee then. They say that that what the baseline is going to be in that charges that whatever the amount is in collect.
Yes, it might be different for other organizations. I don't know how they determine it, if it's based on, you know, population or anything like that. But that's what they they've charged us for the collection.
And then the other observation I had, I think I got it right. I mean, it looks to me as if we kind of expect to maybe a little property tax slump for the period that you're reporting. And when you compare it to 2019, it doesn't look like that happened. So is that something that people think might be more apparent on the next installment they do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we did budget very conservatively this year. We didn't really anticipate for an increase, but we did. We also didn't anticipate for a decrease. We just left it the same. They are thinking that it's possibly two years from now that any decrease would show on financial records.
Okay, good. That answers my question. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Terry. Any other questions for Nicole? Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much, Nicole. We'll come back in just a little bit. But for now, let's dive back into our committee reports. So Terry, I'd like to pass it to you, please, for the CFD committee report.
Okay, and we'll have some action items, as you mentioned, Katie, later on regarding this. But we met on the 22nd on our Wednesday afternoon session, Rush Moore and Nikki was there and Natalia and so on. There's listed on the notes here. And really, there were sort of two objects to it. One was to take a look at the RFP that's been put together very competently by Nikki and the staff. And also, there's a contract in there, a sample contract for any vendors that we might engage. But we'll ask for approval for that tonight from the board. It was gone over two or three times by different people. So I think it's had a pretty good oversight unless we missed something. And the second thing was to pick from a number of candidates. And we wound up picking three that are interested in serving on the committee. And we'll have that odd number that I asked for before. And we really got a good group of people. I don't see any of them on the call tonight. But you could read their biographies for yourself. We picked Kim Kimberly Kenny, who's on the Pasadena Unified School District Board, Dr. Amy Leifer, who's a professor at Oxiddell College and the Art Department. She's also the associate dean there at one time. And then James Vatal, who's a longstanding supporter of the library. If you look at the some of the old right, if you search on him, there was his name was mentioned several times in minutes from the Albany Library meetings years ago because he has a big interest in this disabled access and things that will be very practical for the design of things that we're doing. They're all very enthusiastic, gave great statements, and I'm looking forward to a yes vote on them later on tonight. So that's it, I think, for right now. Unless there are any questions. Anybody have any questions? Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Terrific. Then we come now to our facilities committee report. So I'll hand it over to you for that, Jason.
Great, I'll give a quick report and then if anybody else from the team wants to chime in. So I think the most important thing, we've been continuing to meet bi-weekly, just like the Community Facilities District. There's an awful lot of work to do, thanks to the voters of Altadena and their support of Measure Z. So in our last meeting, we finalized some of the scoring and assessment process we're going to use in evaluating the responses that we are going to be getting for the project manager to help us move forward with the facilities work and Measure Z. The next month, leading up to our March board meeting, is going to be very, very busy for the committee. We are on some tight timelines, including interviews scheduled for March 10. And we expect to be able to have an action item at the March board meeting to approve a final recommendation for a project manager. So we're really excited. We had some great participation in a Q and A session that we held for interested firms with some great questions being asked and clarification. So we're pretty excited to see the responses we get and really take some time to really think long and hard about that. Because the work that we're going to be asking them to help us through is quite critical. Nikki, Katie, anyone else? Anything to add to that?
Yeah, no, I think that's I think that's right. I mean, the only thing I'll add, and you'll hear this as a theme that I think recurs through a number of items this evening, is one of our sort of larger structural projects, metaphorically structural, not like building structural, is to really standardize and systematize our RFP, you know, kind of dissemination, evaluation and selection process, knowing how many of these we're going to be going through, not just this year, but in future for other work. There's been a real effort to standardize that process. And it just so happens that the capital project manager, RFP, is the first one out of the gate. So we're using that to kind of beta test a lot of these ideas and refine them. And I think that that is a very useful process. We have benefited tremendously from some of Nikki's connections. We've been coordinating with Nikki, you're going to have to help me with Kevin's official title.
He's an assistant director in the Public Works Office for the City of Glendale.
There we go. Thank you so much. So he's helped us a lot with some of the evaluation matrices. He's agreed to, I think, sit in on the interviews as well to help in the assessment process. He's got, you know, he's got no dog in this fight. He's just helping us out. And it really is of great benefit to make sure that we're selecting somebody and creating a really robust process that we can then adapt for for future selections. So I think that's really exciting. All right, any questions or anything else for the facilities committee? All right, then we come to the redistricting committee and Camila, I'll hand it to you.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So as you can see from the report, we have been required to pivot with respect to plans for redistricting. We got some news from Douglas of the NDC that initially the data would be available around July 31st. And then we got some additional news from the Census Bureau that that data, the census data for 2020 would not be available until September 30th of this year, 2021. So it takes me back to Jason's question at the last meeting. You know, based on the information that we had then, would we still be able to pull off the plans to create the districts, draw the maps by the required date of next April? According to Douglas, we can we can pull that off even with the late census data. But there's going to be significant challenges and barriers with that. Namely, it will be a very rapid process that will, you know, and anything that you do rapidly, you know, comes with some challenges. The biggest barrier is that there would be, it doesn't really give us time to meaningfully solicit individuals or look for individuals that would want to run for those newly drawn district seats. So we discussed, we did some problem solving to try and determine how to move forward. And we had several options that you will know in your report, in the report. But what we came to a conclusion that, you know, we liked best was to continue to move forward with the process, holding the community engagement meetings that need to happen, you know, during the spring and summer of 2021. Utilize the data to hopefully get those those maps drawn, drafted and reviewed, and then continue with the engagement process that has to happen. But then hold that information or hold maps and use it for the following election, which would be the 2024 election. So there's some, again, barriers with that as well, meaning that there's some and I'm sorry, I keep getting a message that my internet connection is unstable. So I don't know if you can still hear me because you kind of.
We can hear you. Okay, yeah, the videos, the video is a little jumpy, but the audio is good. Yeah.
Okay, good, good. So let's see, where was I? So we were so we're looking at how to move forward and we came up with, we all, you know, came to an agreement that it would be able to continue with the plans, but basically use the newly drawn seats for, you know, the redistricting and the maps for the 2024 election versus the the following that is is coming. As noted in the report, some of the barriers or the concerns that come up with that are some potential liability. But based on the research and Douglas's feedback, it's highly unlikely that we will have any financial impact there. But there is the the concern that there might be. So I think that that is kind of a nutshell where we are. I don't know, Katie, if you want to add anything or Nikki, if you want to add anything to kind of flesh that out that I might be missing.
Yeah, no, I think I think that's very complete. I mean, at the end of the day, this process is like super confusing and complicated. And it is also further complicated by the potential, like just the sort of, you know, roll the dice potential of a demand letter. So I think it might be helpful to just briefly outline how that works, where we've been, the decisions we've made to this point and what we're recommending to you now. Because, you know, certainly, we're weighing competing goods, right? On the one hand, we want to have really an inclusive and good and democratic process around drawing these boundary lines. We also want to have time to, you know, recruit candidates, encourage people to run in those districts. That's going to take some public outreach and some education. We know from our own recent history that, you know, beating the bushes and getting folks to step up and run is is sort of a time intensive and labor intensive process. So we want to have enough runway to do that successfully. And then, you know, on basically the third hand, there's always the concern that we might get a demand letter from one of these law firms. Doug Johnson from NDC has confirmed to us that demand letters are going out. What's a little bit different is that right now, because of COVID, there's been a decree from the governor that basically stops the clock. So you don't have to do the 90-day process, even if you do get a demand letter. And of course, we have already passed a resolution of intention. So we are shielded from any financial liability, right? And that will continue to be the case. So really, the big question is, you know, how do we continue to shield ourselves from any financial liability, undertake a robust process and give, you know, the district enough time to really try and communicate to folks in each of those districts, educate, outreach, train, do what we need to do to get a really good, a good showing on future ballots. So our consensus as a committee was that trying to do all of that and then turn around and, you know, launch the runway of let's get people to run for 2022 with everything else we have going on is probably pretty unrealistic. And and that it might, you know, ultimately yield a more confusing and and less positive outcome. So our feeling was that, you know, keep going, undertake the process, let it take the time it needs to take. You know, review the resolution and revise it this summer to continue to shield us from any financial liability. And then basically hand those maps off to the registrar, tell them to just sit on them until 2024. And then that gives us a full two years to really undertake that that candidate outreach and education. So, yeah, I think, I mean, I'd love to open the floor up for questions if anybody has any. I know that this is a not totally, you know, self-explanatory process. So it's not, it would not surprise me if there were a lot of questions. Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that added any clarity. Yeah. Terry, go ahead.
Well, I guess a question and a comment. The comment is, it seems like we've laid the record down for a long time now about how we feel about this with the resolution that we made. And now we've got this whole thing in committee and so on. So it seems unlikely to me that we would have a significant challenge against, you know, what we're doing for the folks that are out there suing folks for it. But the other thing, I kind of lost track is, is there any anything on the legal front that's slowing the whole thing down? I know there was a case in Santa Monica, I want to say, that was pending and some decisions about whether or not this whole thing was going to be itself wound down a little bit. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, the the delay is from the US Census Bureau and then from the state of California, not from any sort of litigation. So basically, the Census Bureau is saying, listen, it's just going to take us a lot longer to get this information out to you. And then once they get it to the state of California, the state of California has to do this thing where they like reallocate the numbers based on folks who are incarcerated because you want to allocate those people to the correct place, not where they're currently incarcerated. Doug Johnson from NDC said, you know, like, actually, that takes about 72 hours. But the state says we're going to take 30 days to do it. So that adds basically another month of delay. So all of that is coming from the state and federal level. There's no sort of litigation or or legal action of any kind that that looks like it's it's going to slow down the process. I mean, you know, the the same thing that has been happening is continuing to happen, which is there's basically an opportunity to make a quick buck, sending out demand letters to jurisdictions. People are continuing to do that. I think, you know, I feel very confident that we've taken every action up to this point and are recommending actions to take going forward that will continue to shield us from any from any negative outcomes.
Thank you.
Jason, please.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I think, one, I think, you know, it's unfortunate and further proof that it's going to be some time before we get out from under the shortcomings of the previous administration in these kinds of delays to very important work. But, you know, the other thing I would say too, just just for anybody from the community who is watching or may watch this meeting is, you know, we are still going to have elections in 2022. And I would, again, I would anticipate us continuing to do the outreach we did leading up to these last elections, encouraging people to run, even though they would still be district wide. And, you know, for anybody who, again, you know, I know Katie and I did a little bit of a Q and A. But for anybody who's thinking about it, you know, don't hesitate to reach out if you've got questions about process or, you know, what it takes and all that kind of stuff. Because, you know, democracy only remains healthy when people participate, so.
Thank you for that, Jason. That's a really important point. Yes, we will absolutely have trustee elections. We'll have three races. Well, we'll have two races on the ballot. So two regular four-year seats will be up, the seats currently held by Jason and myself. And then we'll have an unexpired term, which is which is Rush's seat because that is that basically he was appointed in. So we need to have an election for the remainder of that two-year term. So people can file for either of those races. The four-year terms will again be at-large elections. So, you know, vote for the top, vote for two, top two vote getters are seated. For the unexpired term race, it will be a single vote and then, you know, top vote getter. So I think that's such an important point, Jason, like absolutely, if you want to run, think about it now. We've got some resources on the website. I'm sure more will be forthcoming. But absolutely, like, don't hesitate, get excited, get in there. There will be, you know, plenty of opportunity to have. Um, there will be, you know, plenty of opportunity to have conversations about how all of that works, but I think it's a really important, it's a really important reminder that yes, those elections will still be happening. They will just continue to be at-large elections until the twenty twenty four cycle, when hopefully then we'll be able to make that switch. Okay, any further discussion or commentary on this? Okay, very good. Well, thank you so much. Obviously, our committees are doing a lot, uh, which is very cool. We're going to come to our liaison reports. Um, Terry, anything from you as governmental relations liaison? I see there's some material in the package.
Yeah, there is. It's a small item. Um, it was forwarded to by, by Nikki, and I've done some digging on that, so there was a call for um, a vote uh, from our board, and it was extended by the local agency um, formation commission, which has an office down in Pasadena. And this is a group that, you know, helps administer uh, government entities, and what has happened is that back about ten years ago, the community development, uh, redevelopment agencies were were um, dismantled by state law. And all of the projects and business that they had going were sort of referred to the local agencies of local cities and counties within the area. So there is a um, an agency, it's called the uh, I want to make sure I get the title of this thing just right. The Los Angeles County Redevelopment Oversight Board Number Five, which corresponds to District Five, the supervisory district. And what it is, is a group of people that make decisions about how redevelopment money is rechanneled, basically. They sell assets and any, the assets they collect, and there's property taxes involved that get split up among the special districts in, in the district itself. There's twenty-nine special districts in District Five. So what's happening, I'm, I'm making too long a story out of this. What I'll do, I've got a call into them already, is try to make a determination about what would be the best candidate for us as a board to vote for. There's only two of them. Now, I think this might be the only race actually for this particular thing of all of the districts, the, the county districts uh, in LA. So I will make the recommendation at the next meeting after I do a little bit of digging, but it's interesting, because here's a group or a panel that makes decisions about uh, how to, how to buy and sell these assets, anything that's sort of left over would go as uh, my understanding anyway, right now, would go as a bump in revenue toward the special districts, in which there are twenty-nine in District Five. So I'll have more about that when we get together again next time.
Great, thank you, Terry. Any questions for Terry on any of that? All right, perfect. Um, oh, sorry, Rush, did you have a question?
Uh, just real quickly, uh, Terry, are there, are there actually any type of uh, budgetary line items uh, that are still, that still has cash that can be spoken for? I mean, you know, the unwinding of the redevelopment agencies ten years ago pretty much gutted any resources. I'm kind of curious as to, within the, within the district that we reside in, you know, what, what opportunities are there if they're already still left? I'd be surprised if there really are any, but just kind of curious, do you get a sense of that?
That's a good question, Rushmore, and I, I intend to ask, I want to get ahold of them. I've got a call, but they haven't called back. But you can go back and look at their minutes, which I've done. And they've got minutes that are current, and they're usually for cities like Glendora and Laverne and places that are sort of within the district here. I'm not sure Laverne is one of them, but did you see what I'm saying? Um, and they are buying and selling uh, assets that they have still. So the money is probably pretty, pretty small, but um, they are still trying to unwind all this, and I think we, we cast our vote, I think that will be helping them out and potentially helping us out in some small way as well.
So Terry, is the idea that, like, the the community redevelopment agencies had land of some description that was going to be developed or sold or whatever, and then when those agencies were dissolved, they, the county just sat on it, and now they're trying to unload those assets, is that more or less what's happening? Okay, got it. And so these guys are, are on the oversight committee to make sure that that's being done in a way that
They basically manage this whole thing, and what will happen is that these funds will be distributed to certain segments of special districts and that thing. And I will tell you just anecdotally, that uh, one of the, a minute listed a property in West Covina, right, that was part of redevelopment agency getting wound down, that sold for one hundred and sixteen dollars. And I want to find out what that property was.
Wow.
It actually has a parcel number and everything, so I want to go look at it after that and see what's put on.
I can't believe anything in LA County sold for
It was literally brass and like a median somewhere.
Probably.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. So Terry, are you going to bring a motion back to us, or an action item back to us for a vote in March, or are we going to empower you to make a decision?
It'll be March, because the deadline, like I say, was extended. So I think now it's April the fifteenth. So we've got some time. And there's really only two candidates. Both of their bios or their pitches are in here. You can read about them yourselves. I think I've sort of made up my mind, but I'm going to ask a few questions about them.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right, Rush, uh, foundation report. Anything to add on that?
Uh, uh, nothing other than what I previously discussed when we were waiting uh, for Nicole, I mean, basically just talking about the, the mid-year uh, adjustment discussion we had and the report back that we're going to be bringing, and hopefully, you know, again, creating greater level transparency. But that's about it. I'm not sure. Uh, Camila, did you have anything further to add to our report?
Oh, this is foundation liaison, sorry, not budget.
I'm sorry, I've struck that. I'm sorry.
You have a lot of hats to wear, so, you know.
Yeah, exactly. So, no, um, no, actually, nothing beyond that. It just kind of, I discussed, and I think that you covered it quite nicely. So forgive me, I was on the wrong, wrong tab. Um, no, just uh, they, they're just very appreciative of their support and that they're, they're really well positioned for the next several years with this uh, uh, combination of members.
Okay, sounds good. Terrific, thank you. So Camila, would you like to give a report as the liaison to the friends? Uh-oh, I think you might be frozen. You're frozen, and Rush has a really exciting virtual background thing happening.
Actually, I don't, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Video looks like it's frozen, but I can hear you.
Oh, yeah. You can hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
A video? Let's see. Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, absolutely can.
Okay. It sounds like there's a report. Um, at this time, I know that the friends are having lots of discussions around how to continue to engage and touch the community, um, you know, despite COVID, and so um, though we're having some conversations about uh, their goals and, and activities with uh, the library director and the staff, and and I will definitely be participating in that to um, help support their goals as well as the library uh, goals.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Okay, any trustee reports that anybody would like to make at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will come into our new business. So our first item of new business begins on page forty-eight of your package. It is the review and approval of a letter to Governor Newsom. Um, Nikki, would you like to brief the board on this item?
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
So um, through one of my email lists, I think it was our California Library Association list, uh, we received a letter that CLA drafted to the governor regarding um, immediate funding requests, as well as um, requests to add some funding back into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And they, you know, they asked that uh, individual libraries also send a letter to the governor in support of these additional funding needs across the state, state, specifically to fund lunch at the library as an immediate item. They did put it into the budget, but for the following fiscal year, so there was an ask that they, they take immediate action, so the libraries that offer that have funding for this coming summer. Otherwise, it wouldn't be till the following summer. In addition to that, um, funds for the safe libraries slash safe communities, specifically for libraries that have, you know, with the PPE needs and making sure that we have plexiglass and sanitizer and everything, we need to have a safe, safe workspace, that the funding is available to reimburse. We definitely have spent a lot more money on PPE and will pursue that, but there's, I think there's definitely library systems that really can't afford that additional hit to their budget, so it's asking that that be reinstalled. As well as the restoration of funds to the California Library Services Act, um, which provides resources for sharing across the state, as well as like a focus this year on providing more digital resources, especially to the rural areas and um, library systems that couldn't afford to take on those, those um, additional costs. So we're just asking um, that the board, you know, you saw the letter that we included. Thank you to Chloe for reformatting and drafting it with me. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Any questions for Nikki on this? Um, I'll dive in just real quick, Nikki. So it's my understanding that there's really no direct financial stake for us, I mean, apart from maybe some PPE funding, but this is more in solidarity with library systems across the state to make sure that especially less well-funded districts are, and end systems are able to get some of the funds that they, that they really desperately need. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
I think the more papered they get, the better.
Yeah. Terry, I saw a question from, from you, I believe, a minute ago.
It wasn't a question, it was a, really a comment that, that was my understanding too, is that this just shows that we're a solid group of state libraries, you know, taking up the cause. But, and this is so, so true to you, Nikki, but I didn't notice one small typo, and I'm assuming this will get typewreten one more, like, you know, looked at one more time. But uh, it's on the front page, the, the word fun is uh, used when I think you meant fun with a D, so I'll let you run with that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Jason, please.
I just wanted to make a suggestion, you know, not necessarily specific to this action item, but um, it'd be good, you know, I, I know everybody, especially staff, has their hands full, but just something to think about in the future. Uh, you know, how do we make any kind of library-specific action items, like, more, you know, make that more available to, to our Altadena neighbors? Like, if, if there's space, you could create space on the library website or include it as part of the email newsletters that go out, but just like a quick, you know, simply, like, we all get that stuff on Facebook and everything else, you know, click this link from MoveOn or from whoever. Um, but just something to consider, kind of, you know, long-term strategy, it'd be cool to, because I'm sure, you know, a lot of people in Altadena would very quickly jump on those kinds of action items.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to Chloe about it.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve the letter uh, as it appears in your package with the uh, typo fix that Terry noted.
I'll move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me. All right, terrific. Thank you very much. Next, we have an item from our CFD committee. Uh, so Terry, I know you've sort of spoken about this already. Do you want to us add anything to what you said earlier in your committee report?
No, I realize, I, I realize I should have, I was remiss in not getting Rushmore's comments, so Rushmore, if you have any comments about it, I appreciate it.
No, Terry, as usual, you covered everything quite well. Really nothing further to explain that, you know, we, we feel this good to have representation from the community. I'm not sure exactly how many people we would be uh, submitting applications or interest, and we were, we were blown away at the talent of, of the people that were interested, and you know, we're fortunate enough to be able to have uh, three additional people from the community to assist us, so we're, we're, we're hoping that you, you uh, after reviewing their qualifications, that you, you agree with Terry and I that these are, these are valuable people that would assist us in some significant decisions in the future.
Yeah, I do agree with your comment, Rushmore, that there, it's a stellar group, and my faith in Altadena's involvement in the library, we loved considerably when we talked to all of them, heard, heard their comments and so on. There's some great, impressive people, and uh, I think that they're going to add a lot to the committee.
Any questions uh, for either Terry or Rushmore on this item? Well, I just, I'd like to add, having watched the uh, meeting on YouTube, I totally agree. The caliber of folks is outstanding. I think we are going to be so fortunate to have their voices added to the process, and out of five, you know, out of five people who submitted, I feel quite certain that the two people who are not selected for this committee are going to be a very good fit for uh, some future options, especially around our architecture and design roundtable. So just a very heartfelt thank you to everybody who submitted an application, came and talked to the committee uh, for your time, for your willingness to serve. I think we are, we are all going to benefit tremendously from that. So if there's no further discussion on this item, then I'd like to ask for a motion to, to approve the three, the addition of the three committee members, namely Kim Kenny, Amy Lyford, and Jim Vitale. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second? Anybody can do it.
So, seconded.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing then, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me. Terrific. So welcome to our three new committee members. Thank you so much. Uh, and we really look forward to hearing the results of some of your discussion. I have a feeling that we're going to learn a lot from everybody who participates, so thank you so much for that. All right, we move now into some RFPs. So we've got a number of RFPs to look at tonight, too. Uh, one for municipal advisor and one for bond counsel. Those begin on page seventy of your package. And Nikki, if you'd like to perhaps uh, discuss those items, either separately or together, whichever you prefer.
Yeah, I did just one staff report, because the, the development of both of the RFPs went very much hand in hand. Um, thankfully, uh, I posted on the CSDA California Special Districts Association forum, asking if there were other uh, special districts that had RFPs for these two things, the municipal advisory services and bond counsel. Um, that connected me to an attorney or a firm that does bond counsel work, and this person, like, sent Nicole and I about fifteen sample RFPs to look at. And by looking through those, what we realized was it would be really good to standardize our RFP template, uh, which Katie mentioned earlier. So after reviewing many of them, we chose the, the template that you see, and moving forward, those terms and conditions, sure, there, there might be little tweaks, but moving forward, all of our RFPs are going to follow the same standard format. Um, we did have the municipal advisory services uh, RFP reviewed by, by BBNK Legal Counsel. They weren't able to look at the bond and disclosure council services because they are planning to apply. Um, so we just, again, referred to many other examples to put this together. Uh, I also spoke to other experts in the field who, again, said that this is the first step to getting the CFD formation with this team of consultants. We're going to need to do bond issuance. So uh, drafted, reviewed, revised several times. We took them to the CFD committee, both Terry and Rushmore reviewed both of these, providing feedback as well. Uh, gave them the final drafts at their meeting on February tenth, and now we're happy to present them to the board, happy to answer any questions, take any feedback that you have. Um, if we do need to revise them, that's possible. We'll just have to push back uh, posting it in closing date. As of right now, if, if they are approved, we're going to plan on posting them tomorrow. One of the things we did realize going through this was that we wanted to put the RFPs out for as many eyes to possibly see. So not only like with the prod, uh, capital project management, we posted it on our website. In addition to that, we posted on the CSDA forum, there's a, it's a RFP clearinghouse. And then Natalia did some research, and we identified an online uh, website, it's called BidNet, that we're posting all RFPs moving forward as well. So again, we will get it posted and uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Rush.
Just a quick, uh, just a quick recommendation. I don't know if it actually exists. I know in certain cities and some counties, they, they will have, uh, you know, doing business in the county, and we can work with Barker's office and And we can work with Barger's office and and maybe have that these RFPs posted for business in the county. Although obviously it's Altadena, but the more eyes that can look on that, the better. But I think the county may have a platform for that to be helpful.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely look into that. Especially now that my administrative assistant's going to be.
Yeah, you've got an inside track now.
Just a comment from me, and I think we all know this already, but for the record, the the first two positions that we're issuing RFPs for, asking for, are probably the most important for getting things started. And then there'll be a whole host of others. If you look at some of the material online about how to form a CFD and so on, maybe more, maybe less than what we think, depending upon what our needs are. But there'll be more RFPs to look at. And we'd like to do this in a sequence that, you know, really works well for all the timing for the project.
But thank you for mentioning that, Terry. I also think it's one of the reasons that it's so exciting to have the additional committee members on the CFD committee and approved and formally added so that once these RFPs are posted, you know, we'll have the benefit of their perspective as well as we move into the the bidding and selection process. I think that's really important. Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I'll just say these look great. I know that there have been a lot of revisions and a lot of work, but I think the standardized format is terrific. I think the professional services agreement is good. It's very solid. It's, you know, as somebody who works as a consultant for a lot of different organizations, it's a really solid template. And I think it's going to serve us well and be able to be modified pretty easily for a lot of future, a lot of future purposes. So I think, any other questions? We can move to move to an action on this, but I don't want to forestall any discussion or comments that people might have.
Yeah, and thank you for pointing out the PSA, Katie. I forgot to mention that. We drafted that based on examples that we saw. That was also reviewed by BBNK as well as Katie. Thank you to her for taking a look at it as well. We didn't have a standard PSA before this. So we're hoping, again, as we continue to contract with many, many firms, use the same one pretty much.
Yeah, well, and it's important, too, because it's going to be district provided. Because in the past, we've obviously contracted with consultants before. But a lot of times, we were using their agreements, which is, you know, are fine. And we had them reviewed by counsel and all of that. But we want to make sure that any agreements for services we have are designed by and standardized by the district. Okay, then, if there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to approve the RFP for municipal advisor. We'll do these separately because they're separate action items.
I'll move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Namely, the approval of the RFP for municipal advisor. Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Katie, I don't know for for the record's sake, if we need to do both of those positions or just the one in terms of the.
Oh, we're going to do we're going to do them separately. Yeah, so we'll we'll do the RFP for the advisor and then we'll do the RFP for the bond counsel. Perfect, all right, thank you. Trustee Capel. Trustee Cervantes. Trustee Wilkerson. And an I vote for me. So that passes. We will now do exactly the same thing. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the RFP for bond counsel as it appears in your package.
I move to approve that.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the RFP for bond counsel? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Capel. Trustee Cervantes. Trustee Wilkerson. And an I vote for me. Terrific, so both of those are good and they can go out. Awesome, very cool, guys. Okay, we've got some policy items to look at. So both of those are going to require board approval. Nikki, would you like to update us on both of those?
I'm actually going to ask Natalia to do so. She wrote.
Yeah.
And did the work for us on this.
Hello, board, how are you? Can you all hear me?
Because we're not as good as you.
And I do want to take the the time to just say thank you. I know I didn't get to speak in the beginning, but thank you all for the kind words that you guys expressed. So I appreciate it. And I've enjoyed my time here and thank you for entrusting me with the admin assistant duties for the district. I appreciate that. So to the item, the filming policy. So our reasoning for updating this policy was that we've received multiple film requests. And some of them, of course, were mentioned, I believe, at the last meeting that we had. We had a commercial that was that needed to use our parking space and other things of that nature. And as we were receiving those requests, we started to realize that our current film policy did not reflect a way for us to negotiate. And it wasn't applicable to a lot of the things that we were being that were being requested of us. So in researching some of other public libraries as well as private libraries, we made some adjustments to the policy, which I highlighted the more important adjustments aside from like grammatical things. But we included language reflective of negotiated fees and additional fees. We also included fees for still photography, which we did not have before. We also separated it as well from the rental policy, which is treating to me like it was just for filming and it wasn't reflective of the photography. And the inclusion of multiple day use option and negotiating that, as well as adjustment of additional hours, use fees to be reflective of hourly rate of use. And then the inclusion, after we sent it to BBNK, they included items or clauses of severability and counterparts, which you'll find in the, I'm not sure what page it is, but you'll find in the agreement that's signed by these agencies when they ask for filming. And that was just as they're directed. But that's kind of the highlight of each of these. So I would hope that you all, there's no fiscal impact. So I would hope that you all would approve this updated filming policy at where it's at. And if you have any questions, more than half of us.
All right. Well, no fiscal impact, except that we'll be able to negotiate more competitive rates, which is.
Exactly.
Very positive. Any questions for Natalia on this updated filming policy? Rushmore, please.
Just a quick question on what happens sometimes in filming, the impact to the surrounding community as far as cars and traffic. Is that, how was that ever addressed? Obviously, you know, we have our two facilities, but in, you know, the 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 unattended consequences by entering these agreements, you could have cars up and down the street. I was kind of curious if that's ever been discussed or thought.
Well, part of the, I hope you guys can hear me. So part of the policy states that they need to have the necessary permits obtained from Los Angeles County. And typically, they have to put, I can't remember the actual date, but there's an advanced date that they need to put notices on the street. And we require that before they can even get a rental. And then also in regards to like our parking lot, that's where this negotiation comes from. Because before it was like limited to like specific spaces. And this kind of opens it up based off our needs. So if we need, like, the last time we negotiated, because there was curbside being used in the six parking spaces, that they use parking spaces in a specific area of the lot. And we were able to kind of negotiate just that area so it wasn't affecting anything that we were doing. So I mean, in the surrounding areas, like I said, if they need to use those areas, they need to get a permit for that. And they also need to put notifications up, which is in the agreement.
Great, thank you for that.
Any other questions for Natalia? Okay, so if there are none, then our action this evening will be to approve the updated filming policy. So do I hear a motion to approve it? Okay, and a second? All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Capel. Trustee Cervantes. Trustee Wilkerson. And I vote for me. Terrific, so that is approved. Awesome, thank you so much for updating that, guys. That's going to be great. All right, we've got another policy to approve. So this is an updated food and drink policy. Nikki, would you or Victor like to speak to this one?
I'm just going to start out by saying a few words and then pass the mic to Victor. Last month, we brought before you the borrowing policies to update. This month, we have the new food and drink policy. And I point that out because we've been talking about updating the library operations, general operations policies for a long time. And I just wanted to give kudos to Victor and the management staff for jumping on it and like already having two to put before you. And I know they're working on a lot of others. So with that, I'll pass it off to him to talk about the changes.
Terrific, thanks, Victor.
Hi, good evening. So the updated food and drink policy is fairly minor in terms of of policy changes. It's mainly just isolating the food and drink policy from the code of conduct. We found that the code of conduct in its current state is unnecessarily lengthy. And we felt that the food and drink part of the code of conduct was kind of sacrificing clarity for brevity. They were trying to squeeze in a lot of content into a very small space. So we felt that we, by isolating that, we would be able to more clearly explain the policy. And the the final thing that I also want to add is that we are also making the policy more inclusive by including the larger meals beyond just the small snacks that were provided or were allowed previously. But other than that, it's it's kind of a precursor to a greatly improved code of conduct that will be coming out soon, which focuses on recommended behavior rather than prohibited behavior. So kind of taking that focus of focusing on what we want people to do instead of what we don't want them to do.
Terrific, thank you. Any questions on this? Or comments or discussion? Okay, well, if there is none, then we can move to a motion on this. I would like to echo what Nikki said and thank Victor and the rest of the team for making all of these policy updates happen. It's a lot of work and it's exciting to know that we are we are continuing to push that boulder up the hill. I know it is a long and arduous process, but it makes a huge difference in our in our viability as a public agency. So thank you so much for continuing to make it happen. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the updated food and drink policy as it appears in your package.
I move to approve the food and drink policy.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Capel. Trustee Cervantes. Trustee Wilkerson. And an I vote for me. Terrific, thanks, guys. That's great. Looking forward to seeing what we've got next month. All right, so now we come to our mid-year budget adjustments. Nikki, Nicole, would you guys like to speak to this? I mean, we've we've sort of previewed a little bit in our budget committee report, what we're going to be looking at. But maybe it'd be helpful to talk about some of the specific line items here before we dive into any action.
Nicole, do you want to just do an overview of like some of the bigger adjustments?
Yeah, absolutely, I can do that. Okay, so we're on page 141 of the board packet. This, and again, these financials represent the first six months of July to December. And then compares actual revenue to what was budgeted and expenses, of course. So I'll just go through briefly donations and grants, that first section. And we were able to increase every single account, so that was really exciting. Foundation was increased by 22,000 to reflect actual income for the items we already discussed. Friends was increased by 3,000. Designated was increased by 346,000 to reflect the income that Christopher received for the internet upgrades and some other programming and staff scholarships. And then the literacy account was increased by 3,000 to reflect what we actually received. We got more this year than we actually did last year. Fines and fees, unfortunately, each of these accounts had to be decreased. We've lost just a lot of revenue that we were anticipating due to COVID. You know, passports unfortunately hasn't been able to be open. We're not collecting as many fines and fees or printing revenue as we usually do. So we did have to take down all of those accounts. We did unexpectedly receive some of that film revenue, though. So I was able to increase that line item and that might even increase further. We're working on trying to get another crew to rent out the community room while we still have it closed to the public. So that might be some more income there. Transfer in from reserves, this line was reduced by 168,600, which is also really exciting. We had had to pull in a significant amount from reserves in order to cover various expenses due to, you know, elections and salary increases and things like that. So the the final line item ends up in a net zero budget with that amount still being able to be added back into reserves. So that was really exciting to be able to do that. Property taxes, we actually received a little bit more than we anticipated. Like I said, we budgeted very conservatively, anticipating that we might not get as much as we thought. But actually, both secured property taxes and the special assessment, we received more than we thought that we would. Unfortunately, interest is not performing very well. That one was reduced to reflect what we've actually received and what we think we might receive before the end of the fiscal year. Expenses, we did kind of a lot of adjusting to capital and due to the grants that we received for a lot of that work, the the internet upgrades and things like that. Also, the foundation income for the mobile library unit was added to that and the art restoration. And then also due to the internet upgrades, we didn't need that $30,000 for for other internet upgrades that end up being encompassed by that $345,000 grant. Facilities, we just suggested based on Jonathan's recommendations for what he has spent and what he anticipates still spending. Cataloging expenses, we were able to reduce that due to a contract adjustment. We were able to renegotiate the services that we received from that vendor, OCLC, so that that funding went to the purchase of the mobile library vehicle as well. Trustee election, we did add more to that line item from architectural and engineering since we won't be able to spend those architectural funds this year. And we were able to add those to, oh, my gosh, Jason, bless you. We were able to add those funds to trustee election to cover what turned out to be a lot of voter turnout, which is good. So we have extra funds for that. Operating expenses, we were able to reduce staff costs and professional development. You know, either trainings are are not being held at all or they're being held virtually. So the cost is is much lower and we're not paying for for travel, for mileage, for anything like that. So those accounts have been significantly reduced. But we are hoping to replenish a lot of those funds for next year. And actually, we've been able to actually support a lot more trainings this year because there are so many virtual opportunities. And staff have actually been able to do a lot more training this year than they normally would. Salaries and wages were adjusted. We've had a few staff retire and a few staff resign. So they get their vacation paid out when they leave. And also staff, unfortunately, have just not been able to take vacations this year and with travel being none, not an option. So they've been doing vacation payouts when they reach their maximum accrual. So we have had an increase in the vacation expense for staff. Retirement, I did have to do a little bit of adjusting with retirement. Our newest hires are classic members, which doesn't typically happen. Usually, all of our new hires are PEPRA members. But I did have those two classic members, so I had to adjust a little bit there. Technology consulting, we were able to reduce. Normally, Christopher hires an E-rate consultant every few years to renegotiate our rate to get those internet funds reimbursed so that we don't end up paying as much for internet. But again, he didn't need to to do that this year due to that grant that we received. And then he was able to increase technology equipment with other funds to go to the mobile library unit. Financial consulting, I did a little bit of moving there just to cover the expenses we've had on CFD-related services and legal fees. We're doing really well, so we were able to reduce that line item. Programs, overall programs kind of decreased. Again, we're just not able to offer as much in-person programming, especially in adult services. The really big-ticket items are things like Second Saturdays, which we are not able to put on. And those those are typically the most expensive programs that we put on. So we did just a little shifting in youth services, adult services. We were able to create the mobile library account. That's a. And so we did just a little shifting in youth services, adult services. We were able to create the mobile library account. That's a new account, 6270. And we were able to put some money into that initial budget. Hopefully, we can do some programming towards the end of the year in maybe March, April, or May. So that's what those funds go to. So it's overall a net zero fiscal impact and we're still adding that 168,600 back into our reserve balance. And yeah, we ask that you review and approve.
All right. Thank you for that. Very comprehensive. Any questions for Nicole? Or the budget committee, I suppose.
A real quick one. On these and fines, we reduced it 75,500. When I get that, that sounds about right, but there was also the comment earlier in the meeting about the phones are getting really busy for people looking for passport services and so on. So I'm wondering if you also engineered maybe a little bump up in that revenue line between now and the end of the fiscal year or, I mean, you just, it sounds fine to me, but I just wondered if you foresaw any activity in that line going forward.
For the, the passport line item, yes, absolutely. And I did a calculation based on what they do in a typical month and lowered it just a little bit. They do have to take fewer appointments to make sure that it's, it's staggered and socially distanced and all that. But they do still have a budget of $25,000 for the few months that they will be open. So for March, April, May, and June, we're hoping that they'll be able to make up at least that amount, if not more. You know, they are, they are very busy and very in demand. So we're definitely expecting them to do a great deal of business.
Okay, thanks for that forecasting effort, Nicole. Appreciate that.
Other questions? I've got sort of a process question about the mobile library line item. So given that the mobile library unit is gonna support a lot of other initiatives, whether it's summer reading or other things, how do we, basically, as we're looking at financials in future going forward, how do we work out what is in the mobile library line item versus stuff that like adult services is budgeting for and paying for, but that is being amplified by the mobile library?
No, that's, that's a good question. And Nikki might have other thoughts about this, but my thought was if it's a mobile library exclusive type thing, I believe they're foreseeing it being geared a lot towards homework help. So it would, it would go to locations throughout the community where local students need the, the wifi, the hotspot availability and any tools to help them with that. So that was kind of my thinking in putting together that budget. It's really for the, the dedicated mobile library programming, not so much where it would be kind of a supplemental part of the programming. It would be solely for those programs that are exclusive to the mobile library.
Okay, got it. But then any sort of capital build out, I'm like thinking about the actual stuff inside the van, that would all show up under our capital expenses. Is that right?
Any, any hardware or technology? The books, the departments will work out kind of amongst themselves what budget they want to allocate to actually put materials into the mobile library. But yes, any of the, the hardware would come out of capital expenses.
Okay, perfect. That's great. I just want to make sure I'm looking in the right places as we go forward. Very cool. All right, any other questions? Well, I'm delighted to see money going back to reserves. That's very encouraging. And especially in a year when we've been able to, you know, continue to pay everybody. I think that's really great. I feel very positive about that. So with that, I would ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 mid-year budget adjustments as they appear in your board package.
To approve the budget?
Okay, thank you so much. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an I vote for me. Great job, guys. This is awesome. Very well done. All right, so that is all of our action items. We do have an additional informational item to talk about, which is our emergency manual. That does appear in your board package beginning on page 147. And Nikki, would you like to brief us on that, please?
So approximately, yeah, about a year ago, we, and I don't want to say established because there was a previous emergency action team, but we put together the emergency action and safety team to develop and implement emergency preparedness practices and procedures. The discussion was largely around the fact that we've never done fire drills, we've never done earthquake drills or other things. And we wanted to like dig deeper into that. We did discover a previous emergency manual and with the team, we looked at those topics, met many times actually, and put together these lists of potential emergencies to be prepared for. It did get put on hold because the team was also responsible for our return to work guidelines and all of the things like the, the staged responses to coming back to work when the pandemic hit. So this has been a really busy team. I appreciate Helen Milner serving as the lead on that and, you know, coordinating all the meetings. We've had many meetings. And really what we did was divide up the various types of emergencies that would occur. A team member was given one or two, did the research. We came back together and compiled this and then compared it to the past emergency manual as well. Of note, you know, is the, the drill schedule that you'll see on page, let's see, 154, that will be printing out at the beginning of each year and then working with myself as well as leadership on the East team to train the assigned person in charge on these variety of drills. And carrying them out in a way that staff aren't aware of. You know, I've found that when everybody knows it's a drill, it just doesn't get handled the same way. So we'll be integrating that as soon as, you know, we, we're sharing this with the board, looking for any feedback you might have and then putting these into action. In Las Vegas, we also did Code Atom drills. So that's something else that we're looking at integrating as well. Where, and that's something you don't necessarily do with the public. You do it with staff, but it gets them trained to think if a child goes missing, how you need to take immediate action to close the doors and make sure that nobody's coming and going. And hopefully, if, if that were to occur, you'd recover the child before they were taken out of the building. So anyway, it was a very collaborative effort. There was probably like seven or eight of us on the team. So I really appreciate the staff's work on this as well as Chloe taking what was kind of an ugly document and making it beautiful like everything else that she does for us. So happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that you might have on the emergency manual.
Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, I had an observation on page two, 150 of the packet, page two of the report. For earthquake, it had, we suspect the little things of what to do. It says crouch down with your back to any window. And I think that, that we, we need a little, a little bit more work on that because we've been told in meetings before, and I suspect it's true, that we have old plate glass windows there. And they would shatter in a very devastating way. And in fact, Nikki, I sent to you earlier today a FEMA document that talks about that. And it's got ways to mitigate it and so on. And I think it's good to comment on this for two reasons. One would be that, you know, you don't want to get near a window around here, I don't think, in an earthquake. I could be wrong. And the second is that we probably, as a facilities committee or, you know, as we go forward with our facilities planning, we should probably think about how we handle that glass as well. See, there really is the shattered hazard that we think it might be, how to test that. And there are ways in the, in that FEMA thing that I said to you, Nikki, there are ways to mitigate that, to, to apply the glass in a way that makes it much less dangerous. So that would be my comment on that.
Okay, yeah, I think maybe looking at providing a certain amount of distance from windows if you can. I think this is just pretty standardized language otherwise. Well, thank you. Yeah, I saw your FEMA document. I didn't have time to review it yet, but.
Review it if you want to go to sleep.
Any other questions or feedback for Nikki on this? I had, I had just a couple of things. Do we envision having our, some of our public health guidelines as part of this manual? Or is that like a separate thing altogether? Because it does seem to me that like we're gonna be operating in a world where there's gonna be consistent public health challenges for the next several years at least. And it might make sense to have, you know, whatever the sort of staged levels are. I mean, I know that that's a very comprehensive thing in and of itself. I guess if I were looking for emergency procedures, I would look to something like this first to find what are we supposed to do when we switch to stage three versus stage two. So just a thought about whether or not it makes sense to sort of centralize that information. And then separately, and I suppose this is not really about what would happen inside the building, but certainly thinking about the fire season that we had last year and watching some of what's been happening in Texas with their recent severe weather, it occurs to me that outside of a, you know, public health emergency which we're in, it's not unreasonable to expect that the library would be sort of a central location or potentially a staging area. Whether it's for first responders or county personnel, or, you know, if people need to get bottled water, we're a likely place for that to happen. So does it make sense to think about, you know, maybe as part of this document or maybe as an additional bit of planning to think about how we work with, integrate with local emergency response services? If there is, for example, you know, a wildfire that's close to Alcatina and requires people to evacuate, if we do lose, you know, drinking water, is there, you know, what is, basically what happens as, as the library and, and what do we, what do we do? People are gonna be looking at us and expecting us to have a plan. And I would, I would think it would be really smart for us to have that plan before we need it and then hope that we, you know, of course, never do. But just given the, given the prevalence of severe weather incidents and the likelihood that those are only gonna intensify as time goes on, it seems to me that that would be, that would be a smart next step. I think this is terrific for stuff that goes on inside the building.
Yeah, that was written into the operational plan as an objective last year is like working to become a local emergency response or shelter for people, be it for fires or like extreme heat, you know, and things like that. I think Jonathan, that was kind of one of his, his goals, got distracted with developing this and all of the response is last year. It's back on the operational plan is something that we're going to develop as well.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's, I think it's a smart move because, you know, just thinking about all the things that could fall apart if we have no electricity, if we have no water, if we have no internet. I mean, the library is a natural place that people are gonna expect there to be some kind of a plan and some kind of a presence.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for all those suggestions, Katie.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, please go ahead, Terry.
I, I agree with what you're saying. And about a year, 18 months ago, I remember feeling pretty, you know, energized about this issue about, and it probably coincided with one of those big wildfires that happened somewhere. Because that's a real threat here in Alcatina more and more. And I was, I was at the fire department and I talked to the people up at the station. I said, well, what happens? Is there a coordinated response between sheriffs and fire, the fire department and so on? If you get this big disaster in Alcatina, he says, well, we would tell everybody to go to Farnsworth Park. And I thought, well, it's, you know, I probably was talking to the wrong people, but I guess the, the takeaway from that for me was that there's not really a, it's a pretty loose knit plan of any for what would happen in Alcatina in the case of an emergency that covers a wide swath of the city.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right. And I know our, I know our colleagues over on town council worked with county and, and fire quite a bit during the Bobcat Fire this past year, you know, manning phone lines and answering questions from citizens as people were trying to figure out if they needed to evacuate or not. But I think whether it's in coordination with council or with, with other agencies, it would be really smart for us to figure out what our role is and how we, how we help people, you know, as efficiently as we can. Okay, anything else on the emergency manual? Thank you to Helen and the entire East team for making this happen. This is a really, this is a really important thing to have. All right, so that brings us to governance. This month, I would just like to thank everybody for their very robust committee work. We have a lot of things happening in our various committees and I want to express my appreciation to all of the chairs for their hard work. It is how we're able to be more efficient in our board meetings as a group. And then also just to remind everybody, we had fantastic reports this month. But if you could please, especially as we'll be in a transitional period next month, and Natalia will have just left, to please remember that if you have a committee report, and we should all have committee reports because there's a lot going on, those need to come in by March 12th to make it into the board package. So maybe mark your calendars. I know that there's gonna be stuff happening before, during, and after March 12th, but, you know, just document whatever's going on up to that point, send in the report, it'll make it in the package. And then we can supplement that with an oral report. But given that so much is happening in all of these diverse committees, we want to make sure that that's being documented and part of our public record so that people can, people can access that at any time. All right, with that, no correspondence this month that I'm aware of, but I will, as always, ask if anybody has any future agenda items that they'd like to add, we can talk about those now, or as always, you can just send those to myself or to Nikki at any time. Okay, well then if there's nothing else, I think that brings us to the close of our business for this evening. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Do adjourn.
Everybody do it once. All right, perfect. Any objections? Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned at 6:48 PM. Thanks so much, everybody. That was terrific.
Good luck, Natalia.
Thank you, everyone.